Well, good morning. It's June the 27th, 2023, and it's our special work session. Would you all please join us in standing for the pledge allegiance and our kids at home pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As an adult and treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talent, skills, and intelligence that exists in all children new. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions.
All right, we're going to start this meeting off by turning it over to Dr. Prince for voting items.
I recommend the board approve items 2.01, 2.02, 2.03, and 2.04 as presented.
Board members, you heard the recommendation of the superintendent. Can I get a motion?
A second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? Seeing none? Those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries five oh. Mr. Superintendent, go ahead and take over.
Yes, first of all, I'm very, very proud to present our new principal of FK Suite, Ms. Makita Brome. Normally, I've asked our new appointments to come to the regular board meeting on July 11th to thank the board and also to recognize them. I just, Makita is going to be out of town on July 11th. Makita, is it the Nationals?
Association of
Yeah, but that is the National Award.
Yeah, the National Outstanding Assistant
Right, so Makita was the state Florida Association of School Administrators statewide nominee for AP of the Year, which I joined her at that conference a few weeks ago and recognized her at that event in front of literally hundreds of people across the state. I'm so happy because also Makita was one of our elite students. She's, I'm just really, really proud of her, but she cannot be here on July 11th, so I wanted her to have an opportunity to say a few words to the board this morning. Makita?
Good morning. I just want to say I am so excited for this role. It was definitely unexpected, but I know I'm ready for it. The district has prepared me, Elite has prepared me, every school I've been in, Lincoln Park, Fort Pierce Central, Westwood, and S.A. Moore have prepared me for this moment, so I want to continue the awesome tradition that is FK Suite and elevate it back to the level that it once was. The school is really a family. I met a lot of them yesterday, so I'm really excited to get started and be there and make you St. Lucy proud.
So, we're going to do this a little bit similar to what we did in March, and I'm going to kind of, you know, talk to you, but also wanted to engage, you know, my audience because these are our district leaders. These are all the folks in leadership that support our schools every day. You know, unfortunately, we had a death in our family and I was unable to do my presentation for our principals, but we will be meeting with the principals in July, which you will be invited to. I will say some of this content they will see because they have not yet seen it yet. But I also wanted to say thank you for a couple of the board members that attended Mr. Frank's funeral service on Saturday. I can't say enough how proud I was of Mr. Ocampo and Mr. Gent for the eulogy that they provided for Dan. But anyway, we'll miss him, but I'm excited about the possibilities moving forward. I also wanted to recognize a couple of our retirees that are going to be leaving us at the end of the month, neither of whom could be here today because they have other obligations, and that's Brian Ruther and Marty Sanders. So, anyway, we thank them for their service and they've been recognized in cabinet already. I also want to remind the board on July 11th is our regular board meeting, and I'm going to start kind of a tradition. We're going to have a reception on the third floor for all of our new folks in leadership that we promoted, and it's kind of a meet and greet. It allows the board to meet some new faces, and you know, after we're finished with the board meeting, we're going to go upstairs, and I would like to invite each of you to join us up there as well. So, just kind of an overview of us as a district. We've grown substantially over the last seven or eight years from about a $600 million operating budget to a budget that's almost a billion dollars. We have over 5,000 employees and approximately 47,000 students. It's a big responsibility. I appreciate the board for hiring me. I take that responsibility very seriously, but my evaluation, this is kind of making my case today of why I hope that my evaluation is effective. And I think it's really not about my evaluation, it's our evaluation because these are the people I've surrounded myself with. The decision-making ultimately falls to me, but it's these people that I've chosen that it's really our evaluation. Also, from a board perspective, it's you're evaluating yourself too because you hired me, and I hope, I hope that you feel like you made a good decision. So, I want to start with some of the moments I'm most proud of over the year. You have a book that is our points of pride, and you will see this in some of our local doctor's office, and this is going to be all over the place, just getting out the good, the good word of St. Lucy County Public Schools. I want to thank some of the folks that put it together. I want them to stand, please, if they're here. Jamie Barber, Lauren Pesco, is she here today? Nope, that's okay. And also Katie Accardi is on vacation, Edward Morales also. And lastly, Lydia, Lydia, please stand. So Lydia is our Chief of Communications. It's interesting because Lydia was one of the first folks I met here, and she was an Executive Director of Schools, so I can't tell you how I've seen both of us grow a lot professionally, so thank you, Lydia. But this is an outstanding representation. One thing that we focused on this year was not as much about statistics, but we've got a great story to tell statistically. It's really about stories. And I think today what I wanted to focus on when it comes to our performance, which we're performing, I mean, we're blowing it out of the water in performance, okay? But it's really about individual student stories, and that's what, that's what it means to be in this profession about supporting kids. But here are our top 10 moments. I also want to thank Lydia for the wonderful song selection. So I want to focus on the mission today. That's our mission statement, is to ensure all students graduate from safe and caring schools equipped with the knowledge, skills, and desire to succeed. That's really what we're all about. So, the mission of SLPS is I want to make school the best part of every child's day. I say that all the time. I say that to staff, I say that to our principals. I want our schools to be the best part of their day, and I genuinely mean that, and that is really my mission, okay? I want them to have the skills necessary to succeed, but I want them to want to come to school. So today, we're going to meet a couple of students. Harper, Sophia, Joshua, Mia, because they represent the growing up of our students. You know, graduation is about a few things, but it's safe and caring schools. Knowledge, skills, and desire to succeed, and I want you to see the representation. Tell me after I'm done today that we're not doing an excellent job of that, okay? So first of all, we just celebrated graduations. Now tell me, this is a young lady, her name's Mia, she's a graduating senior, and I ask you the question, is she graduating with a plan?
When I leave high school, I want to go to college. I am graduating with my AA, so I do want to spend those last few years in college getting my bachelor's degree in biology. Then after that, I would like to attend medical school, and then from there, I want to be an anesthesiologist.
Does she sound like she's got the knowledge, skills, and desire to succeed? We had over 3,000 graduating seniors last year. Just seven years ago, our graduation rate was 76%. We're graduating 92% of our students right now. These kids that I'm going to share with you, these are success stories. But it's not just about graduating high school. What was great is across the district, we had moving up ceremonies. We had kindergartners move into first grade. We had fifth graders move into sixth grade. We had ninth grade, or eighth graders move into ninth grade, and those are the stories that I'm also going to focus on because I keep saying, I want school to be the best part of a child's day. So I want you to meet Harper. We interviewed Harper at her moving up ceremony, and we had a couple of questions for Harper. I'm going to ask you the question, after hearing Harper, do you think that school is the best part of her day?
Sad because my teachers is the best and I don't want to leave her. I would say just kindergarten is the best and you probably don't want to really leave.
Harper was actually a little sad that she had to leave kindergarten because she just had the most amazing teacher, and it was just, she had a great day every day, and it actually, she was worried about going to first grade because is she going to have that same experience? And the bottom line is, we're going to reassure our kids that yes, you're going to continue to have that great experience. So I want to go through how should success be measured, and I want to share with you. We hit on some of this stuff in March, but I want to hit on it again because it's really important to understand perspective. I've got three board members that have, that were here when I started, so you have true perspective. I had a number of conversations when I came in as a deputy in 2015 with Mrs. Holly and Dr. Mills, Mr. Ingersoll. I understood what your expectations were, and also you have the perspective of history. I have newer board members in Mr. Kelly and Mrs. Richardson, but it's always important to understand where you come from so you can appreciate what you have. So I want to go through this one more time, this exercise. So once again, this is the mission. This is the mission, safe and caring schools, knowledge, skills, and desire to succeed. And I want to share again how well we are doing. First of all, equipping students with the skills to succeed. Mrs. Richardson, you made a great point. Not every kid is going to go to college. We're fifth in the state in career readiness. I'm going to show you a statistic in just a minute. I think we're going to be number one this year, but tell me these kids aren't ready to go whenever they graduate.
In this class, I've learned a lot, like simple tools, names of tools, how to build stuff. You learn how to level things. You learn how to use different tools, like the chop saw, circular saw.
This program gives students a head start in the construction industry or in their construction industry careers. We start up with a simple project, then we go to like bigger and bigger and bigger projects.
I've already gotten the NCCR certification.
I'm working on my FBI certification.
I'm working on the NCCR certification.
Porcelline High School was a D-rated school in 2015. Look at how far that school has come since then. The principal we hired to transform that school initially was Mr. Adrian Ocampo. So immediately, that year leadership took hold. We're a destination district. I'm going to hit that home in just a minute towards the end of the presentation when I talk about attracting talent, attracting talent, okay? Opportunity and success is available to all. Our success in our district is colorblind. It's also not bound by your economics or how much your families make. The bottom line is, all kids are capable of success, no exceptions. And we mean that when we say it. We truly do mean that because it's directly reflective in our outcomes. So I want to hit this one more time about economics and the challenges that economics that we're faced with, okay? We're an outlier because economics are not controlling our success, and I'm going to hit economics because, I'm going to hit attendance later, all right? Because when you have poor families, like mine was poor, with seven brothers and sisters, and you've got two family members working, if a little kid gets sick, who has to care for the child? An older brother and sister. You're going to see that. I'm going to show it to you, okay, what that looks like. So first of all, I want to explain how this works. Once again, St. John's is the richest county in the state of Florida, the richest, highest family incomes. I want you to see in the core, math, science, social studies, English. In overall performance, they're number one, number one, number one, number one, number one, directly correlated, highest income. This is the lowest income in the state, Gadsden, in almost every metric in the core, social studies, science, math, and reading, they're at the bottom, they're at the bottom. And across the state, wherever you lie, and we're 49th, 49th in the state in family income out of 67 counties. I will tell you, almost every district in the state is closely correlated to how much their parents make, except for us, because poverty is no excuse. All children are capable of success, no exceptions. So let's take a look at our Treasure Coast districts once again. We're 49th in the state. This was our district in 2015, when I was hired as a deputy superintendent, and you can literally see, overall, we were 46th, right where our family income line is. This is where we are now, in the 11 metrics measured by the state. We're a top 10 in a couple of areas, a top third in a few. This is Okeechobee. They're 55th, and if you take a look, they're 55th in performance. This is Indian River. Once again, they're 25th, overall, they're 28th. Martin County is the most affluent school district on the Treasure Coast, 7th in the state, and this is their performance. We're outperforming Martin County despite all of their advantages, despite all the advantages in Indian River County. We're performing better than they are, and here we are. You can't deny this track record of success. You can't deny the history. That's why it's important to have perspective. If I'm looking at a district that I'm going to transplant my family and go to, that I'm going to uproot my children, move, which district am I going to go to? I'm going to tell you, it's going to be St. Lucy County. It's going to be St. Lucy County. In fact, one of the first things I did when Mr. Gent offered me this job in 2015, I said no, because we had a family meeting, and my kids were happy. And then he called back two weeks later and I came and visited, and then the no ended up turning into a yes. But I'll tell you what I did. I watched your board meetings, and I studied your district because I had to know, am I going into a stable environment? Am I going to move my kids and my family into a stable environment? And I took that risk because it looked to me like opportunity. So how are we doing? In almost every metric that is measured, St. Lucy County Public Schools is on an upward trajectory, and I want my people to see this because this is the work you have done over time. This is our overall ranking. We got as high as 23rd last year. If I look at the baseline for 2014, we've increased in 20 areas, not 20 areas, we've increased 20 positions over time. This is our ranking over time. In 2007, our ranking was 58th out of 67 counties in overall performance. Look at the transformation that's happened in our district. This is our science ranking. If I look back at 2014, we were ranked 50th, which is about where I would predict we would fall, but over the last seven years, we've moved all the way up to 38th, increasing our position by 12. In social studies, we ranked 51st out of 67 districts. We've increased to 43rd, an eight position ranking increase since 2014. In ELA, Mrs. Richardson, you pointed out in the last board meeting in your public comments, you're worried about literacy, so am I. That's a big problem, but I'm also going to make a connection to something else in a minute. But ELA ranking, if you look at it, we were 50th in 2014. We've increased it to 42nd. We've increased by eight positions in our ranking. We're moving in the right direction, but we have some challenges that we have to overcome, which I'm going to spell out in just a few minutes. This is problematic to me because math, this is where we should be or higher, 49th, and although we've increased our positioning by five to 54th, we have constantly outperformed our economic challenges, I mean, underperformed. It's the only, this is an outlier. It's not outperformed our economic challenges. This is very concerning to me simply because I know if we improve our math performance, we'll get our first A rating. That will happen. So I want to talk about last year. We were 13th in the state in graduation, last year. Now, they just raised the bar this year for our graduating seniors. In fact, they raised the score to get a Concord and Score on the PERT, which made it harder for kids to graduate with the math requirement, okay? That was a big concern to us. This was our graduation rate last year. I've been saying we had six consecutive years of 90-plus percent graduation rate. Look at where we were in 2014, 15. I'm very proud to say that this year, if I were to stop the year right now, we're already where we were last year, and I've got a lot of kids in summer school finishing up. So we're going to have seven consecutive years of a graduation rate higher than 90%. In fact, there's only three other districts that are able to pull that off. We could be the only district with seven consecutive years of 90-plus. This is our current graduation rates for our high schools, and I will say this is a little unfair. Remember, these schools still have a lot of kids sitting in summer school and also waiting to take a reading or math test that will get them over the finish line. So these graduation rates, I just said, this is prior to summer school, so I anticipate that we will have very strong outcomes after summer school. We were 12th in the state for middle school acceleration. Once again, I'm going to explain what middle school acceleration is. These are kids taking a high school credit class in middle school, okay? Middle school acceleration. We were 12th in the state. I want you to take a look at where we were. In 2022, last year, we had 1,251 students that were taking a middle school acceleration class. That number increased to 1399. We had 521 more students in algebra, okay, that could get a middle school acceleration. Now, we had a high of 1,548, but COVID, COVID happened. You had learning loss, and we're trying to get back to where we were, but still, we had a huge increase in the number of students that are taking those classes. This is Sophia. Sophia is going to be taking algebra. She's graduating from fifth grade, going into sixth grade, and I want you to hear how articulate a fifth grade student is, especially about what her interest is.
I'm excited for middle school because, you know, I always wanted a challenge when it comes to school. You know, school, like the normal academic level has always been a little bit too easy in grades, so I always, you know, wanted to get to middle school so I can learn things like, you know, higher mathematical formulas, you know, like pi and, you know, world history. That was something I'm excited for. Through finishing kindergarten through fifth grade, I'm proud of myself for, you know, going through those six years and, you know, passing all those tests, you know, getting through it all, and, you know, it's something that is an achievement.
I got some news for Sophia. She's going to learn all about pi. We've doubled the number of students in algebra over the last seven years, and what this creates is first generation college students, but I'm going to tell you, not every student is going to go to college. But I can tell you, if a teacher would not have asked me, Mr. Woolwine, when I was a high school freshman, and he said, where are you going to go to college? I'd be driving a truck. Because we should never put a ceiling on children, but we should be allowed to let them chase their dreams by providing different kinds of exposures and opportunities. Middle school acceleration numbers, we are 12th in the state, but I'm most proud of our black, Hispanic, and white performance, particularly our black students. Statewide, black students are underrepresented in middle school acceleration courses, but not in St. Lucy County. Also, middle school students typically perform well below their white and Hispanic counterparts, not in St. Lucy County. In fact, in St. Lucy County, we're ranked third in the state in the performance of our black students, providing opportunities and fairness for our students and challenging students to be first generation college students. We're fifth in the state for career and college readiness. This is enrollments in college classes, and if you look at the trend line, we've added 7,251 additional college courses for our students. My son graduated with an ace diploma, had a lot of opportunities to take college classes and be exposed. If he had gone to school elsewhere, I don't think he'd have those opportunities. But we are challenging our kids and creating those first generation college students. This is what I'm most proud of because in one year, first of all, let's take us back to 2015. This is industry certifications. These are courses or industry exams that when I pass this test, I'm ready to enter the workforce in that occupation. We had 1,162 in 2015. We're now up to 3,404. We've tripled that number. That's why you saw the Economic Development Council on that bus with us, okay? Because they are firm believers that what we're doing is fantastic. Alicia Sites, where's Alicia? Is Alicia here today? She's at a conference. Well, I need to give her a honey bun because Alicia has created a strong relationship with our business community, and they are interconnected with us because they know our success is their success. In one year, well, we increased it by 2,242 since 2014 and 15, but in one year, when I took over superintendent, we've increased by 1,350. Remember, we were fifth in the state. We were fifth in the state right here, and we just increased it by 1,400. So whenever we're saying, or there's a narrative out there, we're not preparing kids for the world to work, the information tells a different story. The Economic Development Council tells a different story because they're our partner. Joshua is graduating eighth grade. Once again, skills and desire to succeed. Listen, Joshua, talk about high school.
Right now, I plan to go into college, either out of state or in state, and I hope to get Bright Futures after high school, which is a scholarship, and I hope that'll help me. And I hope that'll help me when I go into college to help me get a job and further on in life. Improve me as a person and my career. I'm thinking about going into engineering or finance, getting a major in engineering or finance. And maybe be an accountant or work at, own a dealership or business and yeah.
He's in eighth grade. Troy will be working as a franchise. He'll buy your company. Exactly. But take a look at our high school acceleration. These are kids that are taking high school acceleration courses, college courses. And we rank fifth in the state. And once again, our black, white, Hispanic students, we are outliers when it comes to the performance of the group of students that has been underrepresented across the state. And we don't have that story here. In fact, we're second in the state when it comes to our black children being successful. This isn't just taking a class, they're passing an exam. A hard one, too. You can ask my son how hard they are, they're not easy. Equipping students with the desire to succeed, because we do have two tracks. We're creating first generation college students. But we're also creating job or workers that are going to be competing for high paying jobs, even if you're not going to college.
The industry certifications I'm going to earn is my MA and EKG tech certification.
I am working on my medical assistant certification and my EKG technician certification.
I'm working on my nursing assistant certification and I already have my EKG certification.
Currently, I'm working on my nursing assistant certification, I already have my EKG certification.
I earned my certified nursing license and I want to go to college to get my RN license.
We're experiencing unprecedented success. Unprecedented, the district has never seen this kind of success that we've had. And not just success, we're like a winning team that just keeps on winning, okay? But it's because we have a culture of opportunity, fairness, high expectations, and accountability. And that culture is for everybody. I don't care, you know, who you are, we have high expectations. I expect you to have high expectations for me. Because I can tell you right now, I'll beat myself up over any decision I make, a lot more than you will beat me up for it, okay? But the bottom line is, you're only as good as who you surround yourself with. And I've got a whole team of rock stars here, all of them. They're here because I believe in them. But they would also to a person say that we have a culture of high expectations. And that starts with me. Also, at the school level, it's with the principals. The principal of the school is the most important decision I'll ever make. I made 13 changes last year, okay? And I'd say, I made some really strong decisions. I'm really proud of the work that was done in our schools. Especially the priority schools that I targeted, that I felt needed to change. But the bottom line is, the principals in the schools are doing outstanding work. The politicized nature, and you know what I'm talking about. It's like, everybody's just waiting for somebody to make a mistake. And managing, managing to guide our principals and our cabinet and myself through this political minefield, okay? Without you getting calls every day, I think they've been masterful. They've been masterful. I can't tell you enough how much I respect our principals. They're the lifeblood of our, of our, of our district. So now I'm going to go through my goals, okay? Just because it's a goal. And it's something else that's not a goal, doesn't mean other things aren't important to me, first of all, okay? Because I'm responsible for everything in the system. You know, we don't have goals about, you know, financial wherewithal, energy conservation. I'm going to get to some of those things. But these are the goals that I established at the beginning of the year. So I want to start in sequential order of how things happen. First of all, we had a referendum. The referendum was critically important to us. It had to pass, okay? For a veteran teacher, that is $10,000 a year. You don't pass that, that would be catastrophic, okay? We not only passed it, we passed it with 67% of our voters supporting it. That is overwhelming, not even close. And that meant $35 million more per year for our district. To make sure we have the best and brightest teachers in front of our students. Because as you know, it's a very competitive market. It also means, we've got a school resource deputy in every one of our school. It also means we've been able to add middle health services for our kids. And also our fine arts program, which I care about greatly. Okay, as a father of a young man who played a tuba and a bass. These things are important. Because we've got kids with skills, especially musically and the, and the arts, that they need to be able to explore those interests. So I'm going to give myself a check in that box. Mission accomplished there. My second goal is accreditation. Accreditation means basically that the diploma you give those kids means something, okay? The accreditation was led by many members of my cabinet. And I can't tell you what a great job they did, especially Bridget Harganine. Bridget, are you here? Bridget, can you stand please? Bridget coordinated all of our efforts with the accreditation process. And let me tell you, she did an excellent job, so well done Bridget. But I want to hit the highlights of what they said about us, because I think it's important. First of all, it is a point system, and we had a huge gain of 47 points. Basically, we went from a C to an A on the accreditation process. Superintendent is an educational leader who takes the time to engage with students and value stakeholder perspectives. I will, one, people can be a critic of me all they want. But if you ask any of my cabinet members, I always consult with them. I don't make decisions in isolation. In fact, I will take days to reach a decision. Because the bottom line is, I'm very thoughtful and I want to make it the right decision. So I'm not afraid to ask for a lot of input. St. Lucy Public Schools demonstrated a deep commitment to providing all students with educational opportunities with an intentional focus on systemic equity practices. This work is worthy of replication. In fact, when they came, they said it was the, one of the best they'd ever seen in the nation. They kept saying, this should be replicated. St. Lucy Public Schools demonstrated an exemplary commitment to continuous improvement worthy of replication. All of the things and the data points that I'm showing you, other districts reach out to us and say, how are you doing this? How are you pulling this off? You shouldn't be able to. But it's these people right here, and it's the principals in our schools that make the magic happen. I'm going to check my box here. Providing a safe, secure, predictable environment for all students and staffs in schools and on buses. I added on buses this year. Because it's the first interface that our children have with our system. Let me just take you through this, because this is since 2014. The top is the number of discipline incidents that we had. All the way to 22, 23. This includes all St. Lucy Public Schools, non-charters. So Renaissance Charter, some are said charter, none of the charters are in here. But we include Palm Point, because although it is a charter school, it's managed by the St. Lucy County Public School System. So in a year, this is our enrollment at the bottom. We had 1,167 additional students in the system. But we had 3,590 more incidents. Is that a bad thing? Or is that a good thing? Well, it's never good. But I will say, I was very intentional with what I told the principals. We are going to have control of our schools. I don't care how many referrals are written, but we're going to have control. And where you take control is level one offenses. Because if you allow little things to happen, then big things happen. So we wanted to engage families sooner rather than later. So exactly, what you see here is exactly what happened. Across the district, we had 4,018 additional level one events. But what that happens, or what happens as, as a result of that, families, parents get engaged sooner. As a result, we had fewer level two and level three events. Level four events went up by 100, but almost all of that is an epidemic of vaping. We've got a huge challenge with vaping. And it's very difficult without more education for our students and also their parents to, to move that needle. We had 537 fewer major incidents, level two and level three events. What was really interesting, though, is the bus drivers. So Jukunti, can you stand up real quick? Jukunti is my rock star in transportation, director of transportation. Jukunti has shown incredible leadership with our transportation department from a data lens. Because what we did is we involved Jukunti and our chief operations officer, along with our executive directors, to really work collaboratively on incidents involving the bus. Do we have to move kids? Do we have to separate kids? Do we have to change routes? All of these things became a real science. But the most important thing was a training piece. How do bus drivers deal with students that are providing them challenges, okay? So between the months and during the months of September, October, we embarked on a very ambitious training program for our bus drivers that we will do every day. Positive behavioral reinforcement, CHAMPs. Look what happened. August and September of the year starts, we see an uptick. As soon as we implement training with the bus drivers, we see a reduction every single month in our bus incidents. For a total of 122 fewer incidents on our buses. Because that's 122 more opportunities, or fewer opportunities for kids to have a bad day. Which impacts the whole system. So honestly, I'm going to give my, give ourselves, us, a check in that box. Because I do feel that our schools, comparatively speaking, if you talk to other districts, we have control. We have control. The last goal is improving ELA performance. So I want to take you, first of all, there's 11 cells in a district accountability system. We ranked 23rd in the state overall. You can see where we rank in every single one of these, these cells. We're only going to be looking at two today, because a lot of these other metrics aren't official, okay? These are the only two official results that we kind of have right now. We have a ballpark of where we're going to be, we're going to be in the top 10, we're going to be in the top 10, we're going to be in the top 10. But we won't have learning gains this year, because we're transitioning from one test to another. So this is ELA grades three through 10. And I want to oversimplify it, because how many of our metrics, remember, we transitioned from the FSA to progress monitoring, they're two different tests, all right? But when it comes to what the state defines as proficiency, levels three, four, and five, okay? SLPS went up in four different grades, grades four, five, seven, and 10, compared to the previous year. Florida didn't go up in any. Not a single one. How many went down? Four of ours went down from the previous year. Florida had five. So from an overall standpoint, we had a better story than the state when it comes from transitioning from one exam to another, okay? We had four going up, four going down. Florida didn't have a single metric that went up, they had five going down. Let's take a look at math. This is grades three through eight. How many of our metrics went up? We had four that went up. We had, Florida had five that went up. Math, we had two that went down, Florida didn't have any that went down. We still had more going up than down, but we didn't do quite as well as the state. However, the goal is improving ELA performance. And from the definition of comparing us to the state, I'll say we had a check minus. We did great work, but we're not where we need to be. Our most worrisome challenge, this keeps me up at night. This is attendance in our elementary schools. I want you to take a look at some of these schools. This is CA Moore. About 25% of their students missed 20 or more days. 25%. 25%, one out of every four missed 20 or more days. Now, my question to you, how do you, how do you build a proficient reader with a child that misses so much school? It's literally impossible. St. Lucy, although is my bigger problem. St. Lucy is twice as big, twice as big. And they've got an even more challenging problem with their attendance. But look at Fair Lawn, let me just show you what the difference is between a lottery magnet with fewer economic challenges, and these schools are literally, literally within a two and a half mile proximity of the others. Their attendance is much, much better. Economics are directly correlated, okay? To the challenges you have in a school with literacy. Because if a kid's not in school, they can't learn to read. That is a big problem. And let me show you how this is magnified in our middle and K8 schools. Look at Dan McCarty. Almost 45% of their students are missing 20 or more days. Forest Grove, it's even higher. But take a look at Palm Point. Once again, lottery school, more affluent, with more stable parents, okay? The bottom line is, these big brothers and sisters sometimes have to stay home for little brothers and sisters. High school is the worst. Take a look at high school. 55% of the students at Fort Pierce Westwood missed 20 or more days. At Fort Pierce, it was 53%. And then you see LPA's not nearly as challenging. Now, I'm going to tell you what I think about this. This is actually our biggest, our biggest victory. Although this is happening in our schools, with the intensive and relentless remediation that is happening in our high schools, those kids are passing that reading test, they're passing the algebra test, they're getting a 2.0 GPA, and they're having 24 credits. This is a Herculean effort that is happening in our high schools. But if we don't solve the problem in elementary schools with parents, understanding how important it is for their child to go to school, then all the fundamental problems we have with literacy and with math, we cannot solve. Or we'll have a ceiling. And this is our green zone. You know, we always talk about our green zone, all the challenges in the green zone. And we do have challenges. But I'm going to tell you something. I'm more proud in the past eight years of our accomplishments in the green zone than I am anywhere else. Anywhere else. Because I would say those kids are getting more opportunities. We're staffing those schools at a higher level. We're providing more supports to those students. And also, we're providing more programs and opportunities for those kids to be successful. And whatever we say we're not, isn't looking closely. Or they just don't know. This is our school grades over the past eight and a half, nine years in our green zones. Almost half the schools were D and Fs. Last year, we didn't have any F schools. We had two D rated schools. My goal is to make sure that we don't have any D rated schools. My goal is to make sure all of our schools are As and Bs. But I am going to say fundamentally, this will continue to happen unless we tackle this attendance problem. But we've come a long way. We've come a long way. And I'd say that to Ms. Holly, to Dr. Mills, to Mr. Ingersoll. Because you were here when I came. You know what the school system was like, and it doesn't look like that anymore. Green zone opportunities for students. We've been piling resources and grant funding into our green zone schools. We've rebranded Sam Gaines, just a few years ago was an F rated school. Dr. Gaines said he was embarrassed to have his name on that school. Not anymore. Sam Gaines will be an A. They're crushing it. They're a lighthouse school. The West, prep magnet, all the programs we've added to Westwood. That school has come a long way. From a 53% graduation rate for black students to 95% graduation rate for those same black students. We're changing families' lives every day, and that needs to be the story. Cast, we've rebranded it. We've recreated new opportunities for students. We've done a number of things. LPA is still a shining star in Fort Pierce. Forest Grove, we have MOA. FK Suite, we're talking to Bezos about adding for three-year-olds and four-year-olds, a preschool program that Makita is so excited about, that will feed her school and grow that enrollment. Longwood was an F rated school at one time. We have a gifted education program, accelerated math where kids are taking a curriculum a year ahead. Opportunities for kids. CA Moore, a former A school, we've added Avid. If you don't know what Avid is, it's creating first generation college students. It provides different kinds of skills for kids to learn how to be better students. We're also talking about a K8 conversion. But we're not just looking about career readiness at CA Moore. We need to look at college readiness for CA Moore. Because no child should ever have a ceiling placed on them, just because of their family income. Dan McCarty, we're meeting with him, Alicia Sights, in the next two weeks to talk about more career and technical education programs, along with college readiness programs. But we're adding Avid there next year as well. In fact, they're at an Avid conference. Dr. Perry couldn't be here today, because he's with those principals in Orlando for an Avid, for an Avid conference. because he's with those principals in Orlando for an Avid conference. So we've done our finest work in the green zone. But economic challenges and attendance challenges create literacy challenges. So take a look at the economic challenges in the green zone. This is your free reduced lunch across our schools. On the same chart that shows the percentage of students that have missed 20 or more days. We have profound economic challenges in the green zone. However, we provide stellar customer service to our schools because economics are not an excuse for us. I want to share this with you because this is what our principals do. They rate us on our customer service. And Mr. Gent brought this in in 2015 because I know Wayne and I spent a lot of time on this because culture is so important. And the principals have to see that their voices are heard. This is over time. It's on a five-point scale, and they rate us on a number of things in customer service. But you can see in 1617, we started out at 4.06. This past year, we were at an average of 4.53. We give the survey in the fall and in the spring. I'm really proud of this. This is this year. This is all of our departments. This is these folks out here. All of your departments are represented. That's why I wanted you here today. Because this is how, what your principals think about you, and it's that you do a great job. And you can see literally every department and quality of customer service improved from the fall to the spring because each department has an action plan based on the outcomes of these surveys, what they need to work on because we have to listen to our principals. And actually, 4.58 is the highest we've ever scored, and that was in the spring of 2023. So I want to talk about my goals. You'll have a couple of things coming to the board meeting in July. One is you'll talk to me. Hopefully, you'll rate me as effective or not. And I hope it's effective. I think I've demonstrated that today. But also, we have to provide leadership for next year. Okay, what are we gonna focus on? My first goal is dealing with attendance. We hired a community engagement individual. I'm very proud to say, Dejean. Is Dejean in here? Okay. Dejean, stand up. Come on. There. Dejean is gonna be instrumental in our work with getting the word out about attendance and working very closely with Lydia on messaging. We have to know, and parents have to know, that their child not going to school is negatively impacting their child's performance. And we're gonna do a heavy push, a communications push, to get that information. And where does that happen at? It happens in the churches. It happens at where people meet, where they feel comfortable. And we've got to be out there where our folks go to be communicating these things to them. Next is math. I've shown you a history that our math proficiency, our ranking, has just not been up to par. It needs to be higher. And if we solve this issue, I do believe we'll be an A-rated district. And that's why I'm choosing this as my second goal. Because our math, we're gonna do a workshop next month in June where we're gonna roll out a very comprehensive plan for how we're gonna address math, particularly in the elementary grades and in middle school. Third goal is literacy, reading. It's gotta be our priority importance. Although our trend line is up, I can tell you, if I, or if we solve our attendance problem, literacy will follow suit as a natural result. That's why I want to keep this as one of my goals. Because ultimately, I can't sleep at night if I feel like kids can't read. It's gotta be on there. And the last goal is this. I want to create a framework as part of our accreditation process. You know, we had our four pillars. But every time we've gone through the accreditation process, they said, where's your five-year strategic plan? And we haven't had one until now. We're gonna build a five-year strategic plan. And when I say things like, these are my goals, I'll have discipline outcomes in the strategic plan. I'll have safety outcomes in the strategic plan. I'll have financial outcomes in the strategic plan. I'll have energy conservation things in the five-year strategic plan. It's basically creating a plan where we do our goal setting, it's gonna be in the plan as outlined over the next five years, what we want to accomplish. And Bridgette, stand up again. Bridgette is leading the work. Bridgette is gonna present our year one plan in June. And then we're gonna be working with you moving forward about what we want in that five-year plan. And we hope to have that completed by the end of the year. So I'm gonna close with a couple of things. First, the mission, graduations. I accept criticism. I don't mind. I just want to make sure any criticism I get is fair. We had some hiccups in graduation. The only hiccup that I felt that is a fair criticism is the generator went out. We should have a backup. Which, which, we'll have that done. We're South Florida. I can't control the rain. Cannot control it. I don't have that power, alright? We talked about a couple of things, and I wanted the board to know. No matter what, first of all, the Finn Center was untenable. You all were there. We had to split it up. We got a lot of complaints, so we went to an outdoor. When we look at the weather, we control how fast the ceremony moves based on what weather's gonna come, okay? So sometimes they ask the names to be called faster or slower based on what it looks like at 10:00 AM in the morning, okay? We're gonna look to move graduations up about 30 minutes next year because we normally have pretty good weather in the morning, and we might tighten the timeframe between the first and the second graduations. But if kids get rained on, they get rained on. We talked about putting a tent over the kids, but guess what? Then the families can't see them. So, you know, it's easy to be critical of this, but it's hard to find solutions because we don't have an indoor venue. What I want to focus on, though, is even with the hiccups, is the kids that cross that stage. Because I can tell you about the graduation experience. Isn't so much as having your kid's name called because that's gonna happen like that anyway. It's what happens after the graduation. It's where everybody goes to lunch. It's when Maverick graduated and all of his family came in, and we spent the day together. Because it's really about family communal. But not just that. It's about kids celebrating by crossing the stage. So I want to divert attention from the rain and talk about the individual stories. So we had probably about 400 to 500 students that might not have been on track to graduate in 2023. But because of the relentless work of our teachers, our support staffs, our administrators, those kids crossed the finish line. Remember, I told you the story of the person that is responsible for me being here today, and that's Mr. Woolwine, who I met as a freshman in high school. I also told a story, and I don't know if you all heard me tell this story, but I went and visited him many years later to thank him. As part of that story, he was an assistant principal at Niceville High School. And I went and visited him, and I thought we were gonna have this emotional reunion. He was gonna hug me. He's gonna remember who I was and all this kind of stuff. And he had no frickin' clue who I was. And I had to go kind of dig in and tell him, hey, I was the kid that was helping you after school. And he's, oh, Johnny, yes, I remember you. Yes. He may have been lying to me, I don't know. But sometimes, that's what great teachers do, and that's what great staff members do. This was interesting because I want you to meet a young lady. And she's had a tough time. She's had a tough time. And we interviewed her. And it was really interesting because, you know, we told the child to pick the person that made the difference for you, okay? And we're gonna ask them to ask you the questions we're gonna ask. Now, the person asking the questions didn't know the purpose, okay? But I want you to hear Crystal tell her story and about our mission and what our real mission is, is saving kids and providing opportunities for kids. And this is Crystal.
My name is Crystal Curcio. When I leave high school, I want to go to Police Academy at IRSI and become a deputy for the sheriff's office. I'm an explorer for the San Jose County Sheriff's Office.
What is your proudest accomplishment as a student?
Graduating high school because I've come very far since freshman year. When I first got into high school, I was having a lot of family issues at home. And then I came to Central, and I met you. And then I started to become family with my Central people. And then I just learned that it was gonna be okay, and I was gonna be able to do it on my own. I remember that it was very hard to even just come to school in the beginning. And I've always been very smart. It's never been my problem with academics. But just staying in school to get my work done was very hard because at home, it wasn't the best scenario. But being able to talk to teachers like you helped me a lot throughout the last four years. I've been adopted now. And my mom signed with her right sophomore year, right before you left. And now I've been adopted, and I'm doing very well. I've built the bond with you that's strong enough to know that I know when you're disappointed in me. And I knew that when I didn't go to class, you were disappointed in me. And I also knew that at the end of the day, there was gonna be light at the end of the tunnel somewhere. If I don't do it for myself, who's gonna do it for me? And I can't sit around and wait. Just knowing that, no matter how bad my day was, I would still come to school, but I knew like I had somebody to talk to. I didn't think I was gonna do it.
So your grades are?
I'm an A honor roll student at the moment, and I have a 3.0 GPA. I'm ready to start college. I want to be able to start my career, and I want to be able to be something, you know? So being, graduating from high school with no help definitely taught me that if I can do it now, I can do it at any point in my life. Within the past year, I've been watching my parents. And my dad is deputy sheriff, and my mom is CSI. Starting the Explorer Program gave me a very eye-opening aspect to that world. And being able to protect people and help people out in different scenarios, like I needed the help, is why I want to do it. If you want to do it, you'll do it. I mean, that goes for anybody. Me, you, anybody. If you want to do it, you'll do it. You just need the right people around you.
So all you need to be successful, research shows, is to have one meaningful adult relationship in school. One meaningful adult relationship. Somebody that's gonna, gonna help you, somebody that's gonna guide you, somebody that's gonna offer you that support. What's really interesting is the person that did that interview that didn't really recognize what she meant to Crystal was when Crystal started at the school, Mona Ray, Miller Buchanan was the principal. And Mona did that interview. Mona, will you stand up? Now, Mona, were you aware of the impact you made on Crystal?
No, I was shocked she asked me to be her person. And I knew her life was tough, but I had no idea how much I was impacted in her life when I made the change.
Thank you, Mona. The bottom line is, we have these stories happening all over our schools because of the committed professionals that are in St. Lucy County public schools. So we're a destination district. And I know I'm gonna miss somebody, but I just want to say how important it is with us as the board, okay? Our teamwork is essential to our success. Our relationships are essential to our success. People pay attention to my behavior. I recognize that. My staff is watching me every day with how I handle problems, okay? And how I treat people. And I try to always treat people the right way. When I came to St. Lucy County in 2015, I was stunned at the quality of the people. I mean, I was blown away. I thought I had died and gone to heaven. It was just the most amazing group of people. Everybody got along. There were no like backstabbing political machinations going on. It was like one big kumbaya paradise. But what was interesting, though, is that as you go on and over seven or eight years, you start to hire people. People don't quit jobs, they quit bosses. And let me tell you something. Across the state, nobody wants to take a chance and go to a district that is dysfunctional. Nobody wants that. So whose behavior do they watch? They watch my behavior, but they watch your behavior. They watch you. They did what I do. They watch a board meeting. I want to ask these folks to stand up. Adrian, keep standing for a minute. Dr. Sanchez isn't here. Ms. Esther Rivera, you stand up. Mr. Daryl Conyimas. Mr. Jacunte Prince. Mr. Derek McSween. Mr. Aaron Clements. Dr. Megan Green. Stay standing for just a second. Is Megan here? Okay. These are people that were recruited from outside our district. They transplanted their families here. They took a risk to come here, just like I did. And you know what? The number one thing that I look for to hire is not just your professional qualities, it's your ability to work as a team. Your ability to assimilate into a team structure. And let me tell you, guys, you are great teammates, okay? Go ahead and sit down. Now, I'm gonna thank my cabinet. I want them to stand up. Ryan Rutherford, he's not here. Dr. Sanchez is here. Adrian, stand up again. Michelle Thomas. Heather Rowland. Mona Ray Miller Buchanan. Daryl Conyimas. Terrence O'Leary. Kevin Perry. He's not here. Rod Natta. Latricia Woolard. Helen Wild. Lydia Martin. Denise Rodriguez. Barbara Sadica. These are the people that I've surrounded myself with. They, I trust them implicitly. They're the people I rely on. They're the people sometimes I vent to. Sometimes, occasionally, okay? But they're my partners. And all of the success we've had is attributable to people in this room. So thank you. But going back to my point of transplant, we're a destination district. In 2015, I took a risk. I came to the district. It's the best personal and professional risk I've ever taken. My family's here today. Get a little choked up talking about you guys, but thank you. So the mission of SLPS is graduating students from safe and caring schools equipped with the knowledge, skills, and desire to succeed. I've been very blessed. My wife is a teacher. My son graduated from Treasure Coast. And my daughter is going to Centennial next year. And I wanted you to hear from a moving-up eighth grader to close my session out today. Lydia? Oh, sorry. It's just animations.
I'm Meredith Prince. I'm in eighth grade. I play volleyball. I played school season, and I played in club. I am an NJHS member. I'm NJHS president for Palm Point. I feel like I've been here for a really long time, and I've been with pretty much the same people since the first grade. And it's gonna be really weird going to a place that I don't know many people. And I'm not sure if I'm gonna have the same class with any of my friends, so. Ms. Mark Woods. She was my teacher in the fourth grade. So I still, every year, I come and see her[1656.81] So I still, every year I come and see her or every time I get the chance to. Cause she's just like a familiar person to me and she's important in my life. And Mr. and Mrs. Pharaoh. Ms. Pharaoh I had in sixth grade. Mr. Pharaoh I had in seventh grade. And they were just amazing teachers and they always supported me. I'm not really sure what I want to be. I would like to be either in the medical or something, maybe like criminal justice. I'm not sure yet, but don't let other people determine what you wanna do, what you wanna be. Just do it, you know, whatever you wanna do.
I've got skin in the game. My kids are in our public schools. Meredith starts Centennial next year. Maverick had a great experience at Treasure Coast High School. My wife's a teacher. I can't think of a higher form of flattery for St. Lucie Public Schools than having your kids attend St. Lucie Public Schools. And I think I've demonstrated from this presentation that we are doing a great job with building our future. Once again, July 11th, you'll be doing my evaluation. I wanted to let you know I'm available to meet with each of you individually if you would like to discuss anything you would like to discuss. I just wanted you to be aware of my schedule. I will be here the rest of the week and I'll be here Monday of next week. But Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, I'm taking off. But I'll be here the following Monday and Tuesday if you wanna schedule anything through Chris. I just wanted you to be aware. So July 11th also, I'll be submitting my goals for 2324 that you've seen today. If you wanna discuss any of those privately as well, I'm open. And also, the norms. We met a few months back. We created a document. I sent that to each of you with the edits that were requested individually by a few of you. I'll be submitting the norms on the July 11th agenda as well. I wanna thank my team, my staff. You guys have done a great job. Also, last thing I wanted to mention, video. Steve Devlin, Doug Simpson, Craig Jerome, stand up. They're my wizards on the cameras. Great job. They put our videos together. I also wanted to recognize our folks with the data slides. Andrea Riley, Coley Escher, Adrian Ocampo, your team and assessment, stand up. Andrea, Coley, you here still? Did a great job. Thank you so much. You poor guys are being called to my office every five minutes, running back and forth to go over some stuff. So anyway, I appreciate the board for the opportunity you've given me. And I'm looking forward to 2324, as long as you will have me, alright? No surprises, please. Alright, that concludes my presentation. Mr. Chair.
Board members, any comments? Ms. Holly?
I think in, in light of the presentation today and everything we know, I think this board should stand and give an ovation to all of, to Dr. Prince and the entire team.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly, I know you're dying to say something.
She just said it all. I think we have the greatest staff in the world. And you're lucky to have them. They make you look good, John. All those things you said here, I gotta agree with you.
I know, Mr. Kelly.
You're doing a great job, but you got some great people behind you, boy. Terrific. And one quick prediction I want you to watch for me, cause I won't be around, but our fifth grader there, Sophia, quick prediction, you gotta watch her for me. In the next 20 years, that, that young lady will be a president of a bank. She'll be running for state senate or she will be, hopefully she will be a principal at one of our high schools. But watch that kid. I'm a good judge of character. That little girl had it all. Wow. She represents St. Lucie County. So I hope her mom and dad are watching this. But that's all I gotta say. What a staff. Fantastic.
Dr. Mills?
I'm at, I'm at a loss for words. Your presentation was excellent. And I almost cried a few times. I really did because especially, I heard you, Dr. Prince, when you got choked up when you mentioned your family. Those children are our families. And I know what many of them are going through. And they need us. And I thank you for the work that you're doing. Because I know what some of those homes are like. And I know what some of those kids are going through. And they don't have what a lot of other children have. And so to hear them, that young lady that spoke, that was adopted, to hear her story and to understand what some of those children go through. I understand because I went through a lot of that as a child. So that's why it's so personal, I think to me right now, why it's hitting home with me. You mentioned the attendance and how important that is. And you mentioned going into churches. But I'm gonna tell you what's gonna really work, knocking on those doors. Churches are good. That's where the group of people come. But many of the folks with children that are not coming to school don't go to church. So we've gotta get out in the community and somehow knock on doors. And they will listen, just as many of those children, when they felt like they had support, began to listen and their lives turned around. There are parents out there, they need to have someone knock on their door and tell them how important it is for their child to be at school.
Well, one thing, you know, I, I agree 100%. And I'm so happy that Dejean has taken on this, this big responsibility. But it's gonna take a village. We're gonna have to mobilize volunteers to do exactly what you're saying. Because there's strength in numbers. And you know, we've got people that want to get involved in our local communities. And this is something that, that we're gonna try to get more people involved to help us out in the communities with regards to getting the kids in school. But it is a huge challenge for us. And, and I can't turn a blind eye to really what is impacting everything else in the system, which is the kids, just, you know, COVID, after COVID, it got a lot more challenging. So we've gotta get them back in. But, but thank you, Dr. Mills. It's power, your response is powerful. Thank you.
If they're not in school, they cannot learn. They cannot learn. Even the A student, who ended up being an A student, that was adopted, the young lady. When she wasn't in school, she could learn. So that's how important it is to have them in school. And so those interviews were excellent. Your presentation was excellent. I'm so grateful that we are where we are right now as a county, as a school district here in St. Lucie County. I'm very grateful to all of you. I'm very grateful to what we have done in the past 12 years of my being a board member. And I'm just looking forward to us continuing on and moving forward. I know it's not an overnight thing and I know we got a lot of naysayers out there. But I also know what we've done. I've been here. I'm a witness of what is taking place. And I am grateful for all of you that came, even to the county, that, that you've brought to the county. I'm grateful for you and for your abilities and your talents. And I'm like this, we need the right people in the right places and then we can make that difference. So, young lady, I've always wanted to learn how to play chess. I didn't realize you were such a chess person. I'm not gonna ask you to volunteer and come to my after-school program and teach me chess. I'm not gonna ask that. But just in case you're considering it, come see me afterwards. Thank you all for your presentation and thank you for having your family here and having you for being willing to speak. Because that's, that's, that's a challenge to do that. So we appreciate your dedication toward that.
She's just happy she got her braces off, so.
Oh, oh, okay. Okay. Alright, that's it.
Thank you, Dr. Mills. Mrs. Richardson?
Thank you. So, this was a, a, a good presentation. And I too echo the words of Dr. Mills with regards to, you know, or the district. And I do appreciate Ms. Dejean going out and, and bringing the kids or speaking to the parents. Because that is an important component to what I am concerned about with our kids. Like Dr. Mills say, they are not just children or kids or whatever they are, family. And we are that village. And we have to do something to change the trajectory of our kids, of some of them, of their lives. Cause some, you know, our kids, as we know, they're not at a good place. Because, you know, economics and all the things that you said, we are aware of that. But I am also aware that all children are capable of success. We just need to find what that place is. And for that particular child. And so it's going to take a lot of work. But when you look at all the children that you interviewed, you know, you see that the work pays off. It's not in vain. And even if it doesn't, we prepare a place before them. We set before them the table and let them eat from that table. And so we would have done our job. We would have done our due diligence. And that's all I'm asking. As a matter of fact, I am thanking staff for doing their due diligence and for doing their job. And it's not just a job. It's, it's, it's who you are, you know? I know that we have, and I will forever say that, we have the best staff in St. Lucie County, in, 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 in the tri-county, in this nation, whatever. You know, we, you are the best. You are the very best at what you do. And it shows. But Dr. Mills, as she says, you know, we, we still have more to do. You know, we're still gonna pull more, ask more, you know? So that each child has that, not the opportunity, but you know, they, they feel like, that she said, you know, that somebody cares. And that's all we, the kids want, to know that they are cared for. Somebody cares, you know? That's a tall order, I know. But I'm just going to say, one of my concerns, my biggest concern is, Dr. Prince mentioned it, is literacy. I mean, even before math, and I see math came before literacy, but literacy is my biggest concern. We have, and I, I was going to quote some numbers. I'm not going to quote some numbers because I know that the people that the admin, that you know what these numbers are. But it is, it is, it is, I'm concerned. I'm very concerned. So I'm asking Dr. Prince to give me, or give the board a plan. What is your strategy for continuing to improve as far as the literacy goes?
Mrs. Richardson, if, if I may, I didn't mean to, did you, I'm sorry. I wasn't trying to. I was saying, two things, two-pronged. One is, you know, the, the attendance piece. I do think that if we can make, make some movement with attendance, I think we're gonna see our, our reading proficiency numbers improve across, across the grades three through 10. The other thing is we've been listening to our principals with regards to supplemental materials, which we just approved today to get the materials in the hands of the teachers earlier. And also, the, the teacher training piece is a big component that we're gonna be, and we'll be happy to share that plan in June, not June, we're in June. In July, I'm gonna give a more detailed, deep dive into how we're gonna address those goals at the July board meeting.
Okay, I, I was, I was going to say that based on those plans or given the information, I want to get behind you. I wanna get behind our staff, you know, because it's that important. So if we know the information, we know what, what, then we can get behind you so that our kids can be successful. That is, if I had a major concern, major concern right now, my number one concern is the literacy. I, you, you know, if we have the attendance, then the literacy will, will, you know, will, will peak. But also, if we have the literacy, I believe it will go a long way to helping the math as well, you know? So comprehension, whatever. So that would, that's, that's really one of my, my, my biggest concern. Other than that, you know, I, I'd just like to, you know, say thank you to staff. Thank you for everything you have done. And thank you for your commitment. Thank you for your, your, your passion. Thank you for your drive. And thank you for just being there to be a support for the superintendent. It's a heavy load I'm sure that he's, I know he's carrying. And so thank you for being there for him. And that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Jackson, you have your first volunteer, okay? I'm serious about that. So please contact me. I would not mind at all helping you in the churches and helping you in the community. I'll be one to go door to door. So you have your first volunteer.
You have the number two volunteer. You can call me.
Well, thank you, Dr. Prince. It was an excellent presentation. Thank you to the staff and all the board members. We heard your comments and I look at Tom Brady and Michael Jordan and winning's fun. Losing sucks, obviously. But once you have those wins, you create momentum. And we've always talked about momentum. And once you have that momentum, it's always good to keep it. And it is, it's good to keep those goals in place. But just remember, it's only four goals. It's a lot. Don't, don't minimize it. But we're also building buildings. We're also keeping up facilities. We have 101 things we're doing. But that's the emphasis that we're gonna place us on to make our students academically successful. But don't forget, there's other things, board members. And what's great about our superintendent and his staff is that they hit all of it. They're visionaries. They're looking for the problem in the future and trying to meet it before it happens. You know, storm season's coming up. There's no doubt, I see Terrence there shaking his, there's no doubt we're already prepared. So, food services, we're on it. This, this is a small minute of the, the bigger organization. And, and we are grateful for all of you. Facilities, transportation, fiddlers, early learning, all of you have played a part in making the success. From the old guy in the room, and I, I hate to say that because I look at myself and I look at Jack and I'm the old guy. Doesn't he look younger with his haircut? But seriously, Jack, me and Jack are, been around the longest and we have come a long way. And it is because of the people in this room. And it's because your hard work, your dedication, the sacrifices that you made to your family, the hours that you've put in, the education that you've attained, the conferences you go to. You know, it, it all accumulates and, and equals out to success. And, and obviously, John or Dr. Prince, you're the leader and we appreciate you doing that. So moving on from this, you do know his evaluation is July the 11th. That's when you vote success, or was it satisfactory, not success, satisfactory, unsatisfactory? Per his contract, you're supposed to meet with him sometime within the week or so. That's made available to board members. It's up to you if you choose to do that. It's highly recommended. Just so that you can work some other issues out, whatever you have. I will probably have Molly Shattuck, our attorney, reach out to you guys just for some other things too that I would like to have discussed. And then we'll take a vote on July the 11th.
I have, I have something that you just brought up that I would like to, to mention. As far as the goals go, I am for goals, obviously. But I, the goals that are set, Superintendent, they are, they are very subjective, very prescriptive, if that's the word. I would, you know, like to see more measurable goals. I don't know if you're going to have something that's, that can be measurable. Because you said something about, as a part of this, you have like other things that you're going, that are measurable in the goal setting.
We'll have some more concrete information in the strategic plan, but that, that's gonna be developed throughout the year. But those, the goals that I presented today are the ones that are gonna be submitted to the board July 11th.
Okay, so, okay, so, but in that, there are some strategic measurable goals as a subset of that goal.
We'll, we'll have some proposed stretch goals as part of the strategic plan.
Okay, because I, I, I would like to see, or that's my thought pattern anyway, for those goals to have some numeric values to it, you know? ELA, you know, is it, are we going to, to, to improve by 1%, 2%? In the CERP, you gave, you know, like a 5% increase. Like, is this where we are? This is where we're going to be next year?
The, the, what's your, the, the document you're referencing is, is more to comply with the state.
Exactly.
Because the state's not improving by, by 5% a year. I just showed you what the state did, okay? What I would submit to you is we need to be taking a look at metrics. We've never approached the state averages in reading or math in any grade, okay? You know, I would like to look things from a, a frame of reference. You know, I would like to look things from a frame of references, are we making progress to move towards the state performance, or are we making, are we regressing against that? So we'll have those discussions at board workshops moving forward. It's, it's very difficult. Honestly, Mrs. Richardson, with standardized testing, if you look at the state of Florida, they really haven't moved their grade reading proficiency hardly at all. Because half the kids score above the 50 percentile, half the kids score below the 50th percentile. So it's, it's, you know, with standardized tests, it's very difficult to say, we're gonna, I'm gonna have 100% of our students proficient by the year 2028. That's not gonna happen. I'm just, I'm just being honest with you. What we have to do is look at, okay, we've never performed close to the state, and are we closing that gap over the next, let's say, five years? And that's really what I want the board to look at.
Okay, maybe I'm not saying it correctly, but I'm just saying, in terms of ELA, you know, we are at whatever percentage we are at right now, that we would like to improve, that, that maybe 1% or 2% for next year. And the same for math, same for, because I think if we, if we set a goal like that, we meet the goal over a four-year period, I believe, if I'm saying this right, that we could be an A district, or even a B district, or whatever district we're aiming, A district, okay? So I'm just saying, if we have measurable goals, and this way, you know, rather than being subjective in our, well, satisfactory, unsatisfactory, or whatever it is we're using those goals for, you know, we can see, yes, we were, as a district, we moved from 12% to 13%. Not that we are measuring ourselves against the, the state, but we are measuring ourselves, our progress from one year to another, if, if what I'm saying, if you understand what I'm saying.
I understand what you're saying. I'll present the information to the board, and it's really up to you guys to decide.
Mrs. Richardson, I hear what you're saying is, I once put a superintendent in this position, and it, it, numbers can get manipulated, I mean, the reality of it is, is goal number one, attendance, you'll see a positive increase in student attendance, which will correlate, which was said 100 times, you'll see a correlation of academic achievement, which you'll see in goal three, and goal two, and three. And the expectation has already been set with us, that we wanna see that. In the faith in the superintendent and his staff, we will see that. We don't wanna put 10% or something like that, because.
You don't put a number, you don't put a number, you could just either improve, or you don't improve.
You improve, or you don't improve. It's satisfactory, unsatisfactory, because some people wanna judge the superintendent in different ways. It's not, it's in his contract, satisfactory, unsatisfactory, and this is the way that the contract's written.
And I, and I keep, and I keep going back to, what I'm trying to get the board to look at, is our lens compared to 67 districts, okay? Because our ranking in, in ELA has improved by, by, you know, you know, our ranking in the, in the state has improved by eight over the last seven or eight years. That's, that's a market improvement. If you take a look at a lot of the other districts, especially in our own Treasure Coast, they're declining. All of our trend lines are up, because honestly, proficiency in the state is, is literally, look back in the last 10 years, whether it's FCAT, FSA, or progress monitoring, it stays pretty much flat. It's where do we rank against all of our competitors? The 67 other districts? And we've got more economic challenges than 48 of those districts, okay? So we have to have, if we're measuring something, Mrs. Richardson, it's gotta be fair to staff, and it can't be unreasonable, because these people are beating their heads against the wall every day, and, oh, we didn't get a 5% increase in reading from one year to the next, but we actually did better on an improvement metric against the state. There's a lot of ways to look at things, and I would suggest and submit to you, we need to look at where we are with our economics, and then where we are with regards to the student performance against those economic factors. Because I can't get kids to read if they're not coming to school. So we have other underlying issues that really are directly tied to poverty. And, and we've got more of those challenges in our district than 48 other districts in the state.
Okay, Superintendent, I would like to continue this conversation with you, I'll make an appointment, and we'll continue this conversation.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Chair, can I just say one more thing? By the way, I appreciate everything you said. I can't say it the way you do.
I'm embarrassed, because I started crying.
I know, you, that's why I say, I can't say it like you do. I was very fortunate, in my long life so far, to work for two of the biggest corporations in the world, and both of them are from the 1960s, and then another corporation in the 80s I worked with. I said, everything was about, with leadership, it was about one thing. And then I heard Mr. Gent say it, at one of our first rallies, it's, it is, it is all about trust, when it comes to leadership, and you can, I saw a lot of numbers, you can do, and numbers can be manipulated, and I don't believe all the numbers that I, especially about St. Lucy County being a poor county, I, those numbers don't make any sense to me. But it's about one thing, and I just want you to know, John, I'm telling you right now, it's about trust, and I trust you, sir, that's all I wanna tell you.
I think that's, I think that's important, what you just said.
Dr. Mills, a little bit closer, please.
I think what you said, Jack, was very important, it is about trust. And, and you mentioned something about, Superintendent, about, I wanna see how you said this, in regards to the different backgrounds that different people have. And when you look at the African-American background, which I've mentioned this to you before, we come from a real struggle. We come from an area in this country where trust was taken away, completely. Our people were brought from Africa, and made slaves in this country. And it hasn't been that long ago. So we deal with that trust issue, that we're moving forward, that it's not just something you're saying, but that it's really happening, that people are really being treated fairly, really being treated justly, and there is equity, as well as equality. And so the different backgrounds make a difference. What one may not have experienced, you may not understand, but if you have that experience, where our grandparents, just not that long ago, where they could, had to go through the back doors, and where they were, I mean, it's horror, I could, I'm not even gonna go into the horror, we all know the horror of the history. So it is important that you get the trust of different people, when you go and you knock on people's doors. Who are you? Are you really here to help? So trust is extremely important, and, and I, I trust you. I can say the same thing here. And if I no longer trust, I will let you know, that I no longer trust. But that's why I say, I just free you up to do what you do, just give me the data, prove to me that the, the numbers are going up, and that we're advancing, and that people are being treated right, and I'm happy. And that's who you're looking at, based on my background and who I am. So, thank you, Jack, for saying that, I needed to bring that out.
Well, based on what I know, and how I feel, this will be my prediction, next year, well, probably not this time, because we won't have it out, but next year, we'll probably be in a school district. And I feel that we're gonna send Jack off in that manner. That's my prediction. We're gonna do it. I think we have, what's that? No pressure whatsoever. But, but you look at it, you know, we got all the pieces, and I think this is a good plan, that we're gonna go, and, and we're gonna be successful. And then, like I said, is, you know, once you, once you start winning all these things, and people will start wanting to come, and be part of what we've done, so, they already are. So, good job, Dr. Prince, anything else?
Uh, no, Ms. Ringer saw, I just wanted to, once again, thank my staff, my team, my family for being here today. They came for the free breakfast or lunch that we're gonna go have right now, so, so. But no, I just wanted to say thank you to my team, I appreciate you, and I'm looking forward to 2324. Thank you.
So what I heard, board members, is lunch is on Dr. Prince today. Any others? This means adjourned.